And welcome back to the Cedar Falls City Council meeting this November 5th, 2018. Just resumed after a break. Public comment portion is now complete and opened up for council to ask questions amongst other council and/or staff. Does council have anything?
If I may, Mr. Mayor. There were a couple of questions I had. First one, somebody had mentioned that we don't have support from surrounding communities as far as agreements or say there's a fire close to Janesville. Do we not have support from Janesville? Is that accurate?
No, no, that's not accurate. We do have 28 agreements with numerous, I believe every fire department that would touch any of our borders. We do have a fire district that goes north of town and we have agreements with a lot of volunteers as well as the city of Waterloo. So, we do have agreements. And what we do is when we typically need assistance from another agency, it's to haul water. So, when you have calls to areas that don't have a hydrant, you know, we have one tanker truck and a lot of the adjoining agencies have one, two, three, you know, different tanker trucks. So, we get together whenever there's a, whether we're helping them or they're helping us to haul water to those areas that don't have hydrants. So, that's primarily what the 28E is. From the best of my memory, we have not had to call for help for any other need other than haul water in a number of years.
Another question that came up as far as civil service requirements. We're following state guidelines and everything else that we need to do as far as PSO program.
We follow all, the civil service laws are very clear and you have to follow a certain process. We have a civil service commission in the city of Cedar Falls that approves all of the testing that we do, whether that be, for whatever position it is and not just within the public safety department but within the other departments or with the other, the other departments within the city. There are quite a bit, in fact, the civil service commission is pretty detail-oriented. They, they get as detailed as to, they want to see the individual questions we're asking, who's doing the interviews and what type of tests we're using and so all of that does go through the commission.
Okay. And then one final question and this, I don't believe this was mentioned tonight, but somebody hit me up on email about it today regarding callbacks. And can you explain that process and how that works as far as do full-time firefighters respond to that and then as well PSOs or how does that work? What is a callback, I guess?
Okay, so, when, when we get a call and I'm gonna, the main focus here is fire, so we'll talk about a fire call. So, because, but it also happens on the police side where you, you determine you want to call in more people. So, if we go to a scene and this actually happens about six times a year, where we'll go to a fire scene and we're, and it's, it's a more serious fire and we'll determine at that time to do what we call a callback. And the reason for that is, is you want more people at the scene. When you're at a fire scene, there's a lot going on and your, your air tanks, you have a limited amount of air, so you've got people going in and out. So, when you've got people leaving, if they're going, if they're, if they need to wear an air tank, that'll exit as others can enter or replace their air tanks and it's, it's pretty serious work and, you know, the guys need time to, to rest. So, we, we call it rehab where they come out and they rest and another group goes in. So, when you do a callback, that's what you want to do. You've got more people there so you can do that rotation. But we also want to staff another truck in town in case we have another call. So, we want to make sure we do that. So, what a callback is, is when the supervisor at the fire scene determines they want more people, they notify dispatch. Dispatch sends out, we use a text system in Cedar Falls. It also rings on your radio if you happen to be wearing a radio and have it on. But it'll go to your phone, it'll text you and tell you what you need for a callback. So, people come back in. Now, that callback will go to public safety officers as well as the full-time firefighters. So, then they, they come in and depending on the instructions are given, most of the time they go to the fire station first and there's a supervisor that arrives at the fire station and says, you know, "You three are gonna man this truck and you're gonna stay here in case we have another call. The rest of you go out to the fire scene." And they, they may bring different equipment and they have more, the ability to refill an air tank at the scene or, or whatever the case may be. So, that's, that's really, and some will go directly to the scene. We'll tell them, the PSOs frequently can go directly to the scene because they don't have their fire gear at the fire station. They have it maybe in the police station if they come back. So, they can come directly to PD, grab their equipment and go right up to the fire scene.
Is it a mandatory response that, I mean, is that like an accepted duty of a firefighter or a PSO to respond to those?
Well, no, it is not. It is not mandatory. We do track every callback and how many people respond to the callbacks.
Do you see a certain trend there? Do PSOs respond to full-time fire, respond?
We do. In fact, we've had, we had one callback. It was a fire that was talked about tonight where we did a callback. We had 12 PSOs come to the callback and we had two career firefighters. There was about 18 PSOs, actually a little less than 18 trained at that time. There's about 18, same number of full-time firefighters that were available for calls. We also track, I'm, I'm going off my memory, but I believe of the, it's either six or seven callbacks we've had this year, we've had 13 firefighters, full-time firefighters that have not come back to a single callback. So, I, I must say the PSOs are significant, play a significant role in callbacks.
Thank you.
Anything further from council, Director Olson, Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to note that coming into the main entrance tonight, we do appear to have several hundred residents here tonight in the corridor and in the overflow conference room, most wearing red. I appreciate your speaking tonight because I know from experience that the podium can be very intimidating, so thank you for that. Last year during my council campaign, I was informed that our PSOs would be augmenting, not replacing our career firefighters. I was fine with this. As a commissioned Coast Guard officer, I learned that redundancy is more important than efficiency. But recently I found out through a Courier article that not only are PSOs replacing firefighters, but they're also being put in supervisory positions over them. Moreover, the mayor and city staff state that they're following council directives to do this. I would like to know what those directives are because the guidance found in our council goals documents are ambiguous stating only to expand the public safety officer program and other cross-training programs for employees to improve service without increasing staffing. And the fire chief is encouraged to exercise his management authorities to implement a fire station staffing plan. I don't believe that these general statements can be used to justify the kind of major staffing changes that we've seen in the last month in response to five firefighters quitting. If more detailed council directives exist, I'd like to know what they are. Actually, I need to know what they are because by law, the city council is responsible for the safety of Cedar Falls residents. Section 2, 631 of the city code states specifically, "All final authority over the administration and policy of the public safety services department shall be retained and exercised by the city council." This sentence is a reminder to council that we have a special duty to remain vigilant about how public safety, whether it's fire response, medical calls, or police tactics, is carried out in the name of the citizens we represent. For me, this responsibility comes down to having a specific council-approved plan. I'm highly concerned that I can't tell residents what to expect set public safety to look like in five years. I'm concerned that I'm learning of the changes to this critical program in the newspaper. I'm left asking, with these changes to public safety, where will we be when we get to where we're going? And how will we know we've gotten there? As residents and taxpayers, you deserve to know the city's answer to this and your city's council has a clear duty to find out. Otherwise, the council risks abdicating its public safety responsibility to an unelected public safety director and effectively handing him a blank check. For that reason, I ask the council to support the development of a public safety five-year strategic plan similar to the plans developed by many public safety departments around the country. A detailed plan that acknowledges the stated concerns here and allows residents to understand after public input, solid research, and council approval, where we're going, when we expect to get there, how we'll do it, and why. The residents we represent and our public safety professionals deserve no less. Failing to do so risks more of what we're seeing before us tonight. Thank you.
Anything further from council, each other or staff? Please hold respect, please. Director Olson, if you have your own questions or comments in terms of the public speaking tonight.
Yeah, well, I would like to answer some of these questions that, that came up tonight or, or some of these statements. You know, it's, it's difficult. We, we get a lot of information or questions that come to us. A lot of it just is not, not factual. So, I, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, so we'd certainly like to correct some of that if we can.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I will clear this room so we too can be heard just as the citizens have been heard. Please respect the speaker. Thank you.
So, you know, one of the fires that was talked about tonight where there was a rekindle, really the PSOs had, had no play in this fire. A battalion chief, full-time firefighter battalion chief cleared the scene. Unfortunately, the fire did rekindle and that fire, I believe was, off my memories, about four in the morning and that house was fully involved. So, you know, PSOs really had no, no play in that, that fire whatsoever. We had a few comments about Kalamazoo. We did visit Kalamazoo and there were a lot of us that, that went to that meeting, including some councilmen. And Kalamazoo has a public safety model. So, what, what, and I know exactly what occurred when we visited and what, what the status of Kalamazoo was. So, I, I'm not sure that the information that shared tonight was completely accurate, but, but they do have about 150 fires a year, serious fires a year. We have approximately six. Kalamazoo staffs with all PSOs, every public safety employee is a public safety officer. I believe the number that they staff on a routine basis is about 10 firefighters during a shift. So, I, I'm not sure that information was correct unless it's changed since we visited them. They told us it'd be a very difficult task, but they said it's, it's a phenomenal program once you get done. You have more police officers, you have more firefighters immediately on the scene than you've ever had in the past and more to drop on. They said it's just a fantastic one. We visit a lot of other cities too, up in Minneapolis that have all sorts of different models, different uses of alternative staff. So, we did, we did do a lot of, a lot of homework in the past, visiting, actually visiting cities, making phone calls and all sorts of studies that we did. We, I don't know, so, you know, we talked, someone mentioned a little bit about training. I just want to say that, you know, our firefighters and our public safety officers train together. Majority of the training they do is together. There is some online training that is done, you know, one individual on the computer at a time, that type of thing. You know, but, but I, I want to say, you know, we've, we started doing this cross-training in 2005. We have been, we, we got heavy into the public safety program about three years ago. And so, we have a lot of PSOs that have got some pretty good skills, that have developed some good skills and we've got some that are, that have recently started and still in training. So, we have all sorts of various levels of PSOs, but it's no different than it is if you were hiring any new employee for any new business, you know, whether it be firefighting or not. You know, the first day, they really don't have any skill at all, but as you get into it and they get their experience levels going, we'll, we'll have a lot more skills. You know, we have met with the firefighters. We had a focus group going for a while. We have shift, we've had a few shift meetings. We have supervisor meetings monthly. We've had a lot of discussions with firefighters to try to, you know, get a feel for what, what they think would be the best for this department. You know, sometimes we have successful meetings and other times, other, other times we don't. You know, the main, main station will remain open. There'll be no change in response times because we had a station at 18th and Main, we had a station at Green Hill and South Main and those will be the two stations. When we open the new building, those two stations will still remain open, so they'll be no different in our response times as somebody asks. Our response times have not changed since we started the public safety officer model. The only thing that has changed is that you will have the fire trucks driving to the scene and you'll have PSOs meet you at the scene. So, you may have a PSO there before the fire truck, they may arrive at the same time as the fire truck, or they may be a minute or two behind the fire truck. Depends on the location of the fire. But what has, what we have experienced is that we have had incidences where we've had 12, 14, even 19 firefighters at the scene of a fire immediately. And when I say immediately, what I mean is they were working at the time, they responded immediately either from their emergency vehicle, whether it be a squad car or fire truck. So, we've had some successes in that area. And this will continue to get better as we go on because we, we currently have, we have 25 individuals assigned strictly to the fire department, 17 PSOs now that are trained, that are working police shifts. We have 18 more public safety officers in training and then we have three part-time. So, that's a total of 63 individuals available for fire calls. Now, that's more than the city has ever had. But we measure that and that's good. That's a fantastic number. We also got to remember that this puts more police officers on the street too, so you, so you certainly have a benefit there. But we're, what our goal is, is to put more firefighters on the scene immediately and have more available for that callback. That is the goal that we're working toward and we're seeing successes, you know, as time goes and we add, add more people. We had a question on NFPA. So, we called about 20 different cities and I think we got responses from 15, I think approximately 15 of them. None of them have adopted the NFPA standard. Now, it doesn't mean we don't follow or, or refer to the NFPA standard from time to time because we certainly do. But the NFPA standards are, you know, they're pretty tall order, they're pretty strict and I think that's why a lot of people don't. And, and, you know, if you adopt something and that becomes your policy, you know, you need to meet it. And we have at times, they're, they're pretty tall order, I guess I could say, and that's why we believe none of these other cities have adopted, adopted that NFPA standard. So, part of, you know, the struggles, I think, for the city is, is getting the information out to the, to the public as to what we're doing, some of the successes we're having. And, you know, that, that's a difficult task for us. So, as we see all this other, you know, chatter on, on Facebook and other sources, we're, we're trying to figure out how do we, if it's good information, it's good information, but some of it is, is not true. And I just want to give you a couple of examples here. So, one of the fires we talked about, a homeowner was told that we only had six firefighters arrive at the scene. We had nine. They were told we couldn't enter the home unless we had, and this is quote, "Seven, eight, or nine." Okay? And, and we had to wait for more help before we could enter the home. We had nine, we did enter the home before anyone arrived at a callback. Now, this is just some of the misinformation, you know, that, that is out there. You know, as you, there's, there's a helmet cam video out there and as you watch that, you know, you hear the statement, "Where are the PSOs?" Well, I, I will tell you, the, the fire supervisor at the scene should know where the people are. They have a radio they could call the PSO. But you can watch the video and you can see where's the PSO and on one of them, you see him walking up to the scene in full gear. They actually had to move their car because they drove right up the scene, realized, "I can't drive right to the scene, I gotta move my car a couple of blocks away," then came up, this type of snare, this type of thing is going on. When I got to the scene, I was asked, "Where are the PSOs?" I immediately assumed the supervisor meant where, who's coming in on a callback. So, I called the fire station to find out who's coming, who's coming on the callback. They happened to do the particular one where we had, they reported me 12 PSOs had come back and two career and, and we continued that fire scene. So, there's some misinformation out there that's very unfortunate. I want to hit upon that car fire just briefly too. So, we had a squad car fire just a few weeks ago in, in the back of this building in City Hall. So, a police officer notices a car fire, they immediately called the fire department, which they should do. The fire department has a fire truck with 750 gallons of water. We do have a CAF system and we have the, the other standard fire extinguishers and they had a garden hose because it was right outside the back garage. The PSOs did put the fire out and that's very clear by, by the video. You will see some steam coming up, the firefighters arrive at the scene. What, what was disheartening is this is what occurred. But two hours after the incident, what we saw on Facebook was a post that said, "It was pretty degrading to PSOs, they couldn't put out the fire, they had to call the fire department." The fire department came and put the scene, the fire out immediately is what it said. Well, and I'm not, I'm not saying anything negative about the firefighter, that hood was difficult to open. It took the firefighters 20 minutes to get the hood open and they did it with the, what's commonly referred to as the jaws of life before they could get the hood open. It was clearly out. I mean, the fire was out. Sure, you do douse it once you get the hood open because you don't want to reignite, but, but the fire was clear out and it's, it's some of this misinformation out there. That may not be the biggest deal in the world, but, but we're fighting a lot of this, you know, there's rumors or whatever it is intentional, I don't know what it is, but, but that's a lot that we're fighting. I want, there's a lot of confusion on the CAF system, the compressed air foam. Compressed air foam is a unit that's in the back of some of the squad cars. It's 30 gallons of water with a foam component to it and it's, it's, and in a air tank which, which provides the propulsion, a, it's a pretty, if you watch it operate, it's a pretty quick spray of, of a foam solution. You know, years ago, we saw another department that had that in the back of their squads and they assisted the fire departments with it. You don't go inside a building and fight a fire, but what you do do is you can put out maybe a car fire, maybe a, a garbage fire, a grass fire, or a deck fire. And this has actually happened. We had a deck on fire and we've in the past years have had decks start on fire and that starts up the side of the house, you saw it and you got a real serious house fire. This can slow that fire down or put it out. And it's unfortunate, but we've had a lot of resistance to the CAF system. In fact, we had a few firefighters tell us, "You should take that out and the fire extinguishers out of the squads." Well, the fire department requires fire extinguishers to be in all rental properties and commercial properties. Why would we take it out of the back of a, of a squad car? I, I want to read something that, that I think is, is critical and, and again, I'm saying this so the general public has the knowledge of, of what we're doing and how this works together collectively. Police and fire working together, public, uh, public safety officers working together. A battalion chief said that the CAF system played a significant role in a life-saving effort. Had it not been for the two PSOs in training who used that compressed air foam system, the outcome of that life-saving event may have been different. Those PSOs were able to spray it on a fire, slow that fire down. When the fire trucks arrived at the scene, they were immediately able to enter that building without dragging a line and putting that out and getting inside. That battalion chief, not me, but that battalion chief said that played a significant role and the outcome could have been different had it not been for that. So, this to me is one of the best examples of the benefits of the public safety officer program. It's, it's working together, not against, working together to resolve some of the emergency situations that we have in town. ISO, we had an ISO mentioned. We are now a, we are now a three. We were a four about five years ago. ISO will be coming in, in the early part of next year to analyze our department. I would think, as I recall, most departments are somewhere between a four and a six on, it's a scale of one to 10. The insurance service office does give points for public safety officers. So, they recognize the public safety officers and they give points towards, uh, public safety officers. I've read many articles and I'm just based upon articles that I've read. Many insurance companies are kind of not using the ISO rating more, but they're using more experience level ratings than they have in the past, but it's just something that I've read. I want to tell you a couple of, a couple of stories here. So, we had a citizen that rode with the fire department one day, I think it was less than a year ago. And he was, he was riding with the fire department that day and they got sent on a fire call. This, the citizen, what he told me is he said, "I was riding, we got a fire call, I rode with the fire trucks to that fire call. When I got to that fire scene, I saw PSOs standing outside with, with their gear on waiting for the fire trucks." Okay. We just added the number of firefighters to the scene with those PSOs. They were there and they were ready to roll. He, he's definitely a believer in the model. We had another individual that told us she wasn't a fan of the program. We invited her to attend a live fire training session. We burned, we had a house that we were able to burn down and we had a live fire training there. We invited her to that training and she saw how hard those PSOs worked and she saw what they were accomplished and said, she, you know, she is now, now a believer. We've had it said that you can't learn two jobs. You know, every volunteer firefighter or nearly every volunteer firefighter in the United States, and there are thousands and thousands of them, have a day job and they do this as a volunteer for their community, you know, God bless them. But they're able to do a fantastic job. You know, many of our Cedar Falls firefighters have other jobs, diesel mechanic, electrician, paramedic, transmission overhaul, work for an insurance company, that kind of thing. If you have a desire and, and you do your training and you get the skills you need, you'll be successful at that. Two of the PSOs, we just moved permanently to the fire ship, had 14 years firefighting experience, not full-time. Some of it was full-time, some of it wasn't, but they've got a significant resume and a lot of training and they will have more as, as we train them like we would any other firefighter. So, we've, you know, I, I just want to say what our goal is again, is to get more people on scene immediately, police and fire, is to get more on scene when we, when we need a callback. We only have about six callbacks a year, six serious fires a year. But again, we've had 12, we've had 14, even 19, more than the history of this city. I will tell you, if, if we decide this isn't working, we'll, we'll change the course. There's, there's no bonus check for me to do this program. There's no benefit to me to this program. In fact, it's been very difficult to do this. There's been a lot of resistance and as Kalamazoo warned us and a few other cities did as well. You know, I, I asked the firefighters to, to at least give it a try and, and I, I just don't think we've gotten that try. History has shown, I remember in 1987, the city appointed their first public safety director and, and the fire union resisted and then had billboards. They purchased billboards and had them in town. They, they just, I don't know why, but they just continued to resist. The, you know, we're giving them more help. I, I am, I'm a little confused by it, but we've also had some issues and I'm just telling it like it is. We've had three POCs several years ago that quit the program and they said, "You know, I just, I don't want to be part of the program anymore, we just, we just want to resign." And we, we inquired, "Why, what, what's the problem?" And quite frankly, they said, "Well, we're not getting treated well. We're getting ignored, we're, we're not..." They told me to go out and pull the weeds out of the cracks in the driveway one day while they were all inside. I said, "We're, I'm just, they're not putting up with it anymore." They just quit. You know, that, that's not what we need. We need them to give an effort. You know, if the firefighters would give the same effort to this program as they do to try to make it fail, I, I just think we would at least give it a try. I think it'd be hugely successful. I had a PSO send me a text over the weekend and asked me to say this. "When a firefighter works along a public safety officer for four hours during a training session or 24 hours during a shift and won't speak to them the entire time, they're not helping the program out and they're not trying to help it succeed." Imagine what we could do if we worked together, if we at least gave it a try. It, it's just amazing what we could accomplish if there was no mistruths, there was no turf war. We're here to serve the public and do our part to make sure everyone is safe, the public safety employee, the public, the people passing through town. The public safety administration has done an enormous amount of research on this for years. We've, we've, we've done a lot. A lot of the cities don't want to do this because of exactly what was happening right now. What, what fire chief, police chief, public safety director, councilman wants to sit and, and face this? Many wouldn't touch it with a 10-foot pole, just, just simply because of the difficulty of it. If, if everyone would just give it a try, just look at it from, from a open mindset, I, I, I think they will see that there's a lot of, a lot of successes to the program. We live in a community with few fires, down 60% in the last 40 years and low crime. You know, we can keep it that way. And as this city grows, we're gonna see a little more crime, we're gonna see a few more fires as the city grows. It's inevitable. But if we can put more police officers on the street and more firefighters responding to the scene immediately as well as in the future, you know, we can have a fantastic public safety department we can all be proud of and, and that works. I just, I just ask that, you know, that, that we can sit down with the fire union and, and work through it, collectively work through it and look for some, some opportunities to, to compromise and make this, make this program work.
Thank you, Director Olson. Anything further from council before we wrap things up? Mr. Wieland?
I didn't prepare any statements for tonight.
I didn't prepare any statements for tonight. I'm the old man on council, I've been here quite a while, 15 years, which might explain why I know a lot about what's going on with the public safety model. It was about 2008 or '09 that the state of Iowa told us they were going to quit giving us about $1 million because of changes in their laws and ordinances. Cedar Falls got together and said, "We've got to do something. In the next five years, we're going to have huge tax increases if we don't take action." Our first step was to put that request out to all the citizens of Cedar Falls, to staff and to council, to submit their ideas so we could evaluate and look at what our options are. 21 pages of ideas and recommendations, all aimed at reducing cost. A lot of those were things we had to combine into groups and had nothing to do with public safety. But in the areas of police and fire, some of the ideas that I just jotted down that I saw on that list, maintain full-time police or fire and absorb a huge increase in property taxes to cover the outgoing and added cost of equipment, it was skyrocketing in cost. At that time, we were about 70, 75% of all the money you give us went to police and fire. Other communities in Iowa were going bankrupt because of the high cost of police and fire. Most of those went with a full-time fireman or two in a station and volunteers for the rest of their activity. That's what they could afford. The other items we looked at were full-time with volunteers, in other words, balance it out, like one of the Des Moines communities has done, an equal balance between full-time fire and volunteers. The third one was, take a look at the PSO model, public safety officer model, and see if that's applicable. Another one was paid-on-call, which we already had. That was our first attempt to cut the cost, the high cost of police and fire. And we were doing that, and we still do that today. The other one is all volunteer, which is obviously not going to work in a city like Cedar Falls. So, the idea of the public safety came from the people of Cedar Falls. Council approved looking at that model in 2008 or '09 and seeing if it was a viable model for us to do. We haven't taken this idea lightly. Those of us who've been around have studied it for seven to eight years before making a decision to give it a try. During that time, the police union supported the idea 100%. We think it's a good idea to get more effective and efficient use out of our police officers. We went to the fire union, they totally rejected it. We have three firemen who are public safety officers, but we have more fire that have gone into public safety. I don't know how it's going to turn out. You've all raised good questions, but as you raised those questions tonight, I wrote down whether you were for or against it and what items you were concerned with. And I'll tell you, having a lot more information than you do through the years of study, a lot of the information you have is bad that you come with us to. And when we give you factual information, you say, "Well, it's not true." For the people of Cedar Falls, I would say, "Our city doesn't lie to you. This council is willing to take a proactive stand, and we're envied by other cities, and we're also willing to take the heat for it, because we certainly are taking a lot of heat tonight." I appreciate you all coming. You've raised a lot of the questions, I've heard answers too many times, but there are a couple new ones in there that I'll be looking for answers to after this meeting, and I will get them. I think overall, we need to, as Public Safety Director Olson says, is give this a try a year or two. If it don't work, we'll get rid of it. But you're looking for answers that are hard to get right now. Other than we've done our research, let's give it a try, an honest try. Let's not try to defeat it with bad information. So, I appreciate you coming, I appreciate all of your questions. I've got a pretty long sheet of the answers that you gave me, so I can refer to them, and I will be referring to them and investigating it. Again, thank you for coming, and I'll turn over to the mayor. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else from council before we adjourn? I do have a quick statement here I'd like to read, convey. This evening's discussion of the PSO program has been an important one. This program seeks to keep all members of the Cedar Falls community safe, and the comments presented during today's meeting will be kept in mind as we move forward. Now, our goal is to give our public safety officers the tools and training they need to ensure the safety of our community. I want to personally thank City Administrator Ron Gaines for his assistance in executing this transition to this program. I also want to thank Chief Bostwick, Assistant Chief Birdy, our public safety officers for any safety concerns that may arise in preparing and willingness and candor to handle them. Lastly, I'd like to thank Public Safety Director Olson for his integrity, his dedication of the city, Cedar Falls, and its people. I'd also like to acknowledge the hard work of our city staff and men and women who have joined the PSO program whose eagerness to serve the citizens of Cedar Falls continues to inspire me. Thank you all for attending the meeting tonight, expressing your thoughts, and thank you to the council and city staff for taking these comments into consideration as we move forward. Please, tomorrow, remember to vote. Folks, we are adjourned. Thank you.